Senator, myself, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember Seo, Dylan, Girbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protetemtah. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Deputy Clerk Bloom, Police Chief Hart, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and Attorney Curcio. There is no one else present at this time, but we would encourage them to sign in in the back if they choose to participate. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
As submitted?
As submitted, Ms. Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There are no citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the one discussion item of the evening, which is medical marijuana. And I'll provide just a little bit of context on this before I turn it over to the City Manager and then to our attorney, who's going to be taking the lead on the presentation. So, City Council first acted on this issue, I believe, back in 2009, 2010, subsequent to the approval of the 2008 ballot proposal. And we've had several discussions since then, and things sort of calmed down for a period of time. And then, beginning about a year and a half ago, maybe two years now, my office and the City Manager's office began to be approached by individuals to see if the city was receptive to changing their policy and embracing the concept of medical marijuana, either grow, operations, or dispensaries. And I've had many good, cordial, professional conversations, but ultimately, that's not a decision that my office can make. It will be just a decision that will need to be made collectively by a majority of City Council. So noting that, and of course noting that this issue continues to evolve, it's very fluid. There is a ballot proposal on the November ballot to legalize recreational marijuana. And personally, I think that probably has a very good chance of passing. Not a sure thing, but I think it's a, I think there's a good chance. So noting all that, I thought it was appropriate to bring in staff and legal counsel to discuss this issue and to consider whether or not we want to revise our approach, which was established many years ago. We may not, but I think it's a discussion worth having. So unless the City Manager has anything he'd like to add, I turn it over to Mr. Curcio. You do have a PowerPoint presentation that was distributed in your packet, but Nick will also be, excuse me, it's also on the screen behind me. And Nick, you want, are you going to present from the podium? Excuse me?
I can, if that's probably easiest in terms of controlling the-
Yeah, very good. You can take the back microphone, Nick, or there's a handheld behind you that's also up for you.
This one's fine. Okay. So I have a fairly brief PowerPoint presentation, kind of outlining what municipality, what role municipalities can play with respect to marijuana legislation. And then after that, I thought we'd spend the rest of the meeting answering any questions you have and just kind of getting to general direction as to what, if any, action the city might like to take on this issue. So we've been helping a number of clients work through medical marijuana issues over the past year, year and a half now, since the new legislation in 2016. And this is kind of the standard presentation that we've come up with in terms of advising municipalities on options under the law. So as a bit of background before jumping into the new law, medical marijuana in the state of Michigan began in 2008, when voters approved a ballot initiative similar to the one being put forth at the coming election. Well, but addressing only medical marijuana as opposed to recreational marijuana, which is now being considered. Under the 2008 law, it essentially authorizes two different types of conduct, or two different types of individuals. One is the qualifying patient can use marijuana for pain relief and other conditions, subject to a card issued by the state. Cardholders are allowed to possess 12, up to 12 marijuana plants and up to 2.5 ounces of usable marijuana. And then the other business, so to speak, that it authorizes are primary caregivers, who can assist up to five patients with the medical use of marijuana, and they're allowed to possess up to 12 marijuana plants per patient. So it's a total of 72 plants that a primary caregiver can possess at any one time. The MMA authorized caregivers to receive compensation for their services. They're not supposed to make a profit under the act. There's always, it's always been subject to interpretation as to what exactly that means. But caregivers do operate as a business of sorts. But that's the only business that's authorized under the 2008 law. And the 2016 law was intended to kind of fill the gap and allow for an expanded number of medical marijuana businesses. And there are five in particular that we'll discuss in later slides. So under the 2008 law, municipalities were not allowed to exclude caregiving within their boundaries. Every municipality has to allow that activity to go on, although it can be regulated through zoning. And in fact, the city of Saline does regulate it through zoning as a tier-one business under the zoning ordinance that can be done out of a house. The MMF La is the 2016 legislation, and kind of in a nutshell, it authorizes five categories of medical marijuana business that we'll get into in detail in the later slide. It establishes a licensing scheme for those businesses, similar to liquor licenses. And it allows, unlike the 2008 legislation, it allows municipalities to choose whether or not to have those businesses within their communities. If the municipality takes no action, as the city has done thus far, then the businesses are not allowed to operate. So the default is that the businesses are not allowed. The municipality has to affirmatively opt in by ordinance in order to allow them. If a municipality chooses to allow them, there's some opportunities for revenue sharing. There's a statewide excise tax that applies to all businesses, and municipalities can also levy an assessment up to $5,000 to, $5,000 a year to defray administrative costs. And finally, the act creates a new board, a new agency within the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs that kind of serves as the equivalent of the Liquor Control Commission for marijuana businesses. And importantly, the 2016 law does not affect the regulation of primary caregivers. Those primary caregivers can continue to operate within Michigan. They continue to not be subject to exclusion in municipalities. So the five categories are growers, processors, provisioning centers, secure transporters, and safety compliance facilities. Some of these are fairly self-explanatory, but I'll go through each of them. Growers are an agricultural business, allowed to grow marijuana. There are three different classes of them. Keeps skipping on me. And the classes are divided based on the number of plants allowed, with Class A being the smallest at 500 plants and Class C being the largest at 1,500 plants. And the state is now, through regulations it's enacted, allowing Class C licenses to be stacked so that you could theoretically have a basically unlimited number of marijuana plants within a facility. But the municipality can set by their zoning ordinance how many licenses it allows to be stacked. So you could theoretically set the limit at 3,000 plants or 4,500 plants, depending on what you wanted to do. Some municipalities are kind of encouraging license stacking to fill some old industrial buildings. There's, it looks like there's going to be some fairly large grow facilities in various locations in the state. Processors is an industrial business that takes marijuana and processes it into smokable or edible form. Provisioning centers are commonly known as dispensaries. That's the retail storefront businesses. Secure transporters, the law is a little bit different than the marijuana laws in other states, and that it requires kind of an intermediary to go between the various businesses to take the, take the marijuana in a secure fashion. What those businesses would look like in terms of if they were located in the city, they would be probably a gated facility with delivery trucks, kind of like a postal carrier looking business. They're typically located in industrial zones, just because they require a decent amount of land and storage. And then finally, safety compliance facilities. There's unlikely to be very many of these in the state, but it would be a laboratory to test the content of marijuana and make sure it's complying with all the regulations regarding content and advertising and those types of things. Just some brief details about the state licensing process, because that process kind of has to dovetail into whatever a city chooses to do with medical marijuana in terms of its own regulations. The state began accepting licensing applications in December of 2017, so it's been working on them for more than a year. It has not yet issued any licenses at this point. The state's still working through what's called Phase One of the application process, which is known as prequalification. And that's a, that's a process that focuses on the criminal and financial background of the applicant. Once the state completes that initial round of prequalifications, it will then move on to the facility application, which involves the details of the specific proposed locations, whether they're allowed under municipal ordinance, whether they meet the other types of layout requirements in the statute and in the regulations. So that, as I said, the state's only in the first phase as of now, hasn't issued any final licenses. It has issued a few prequalifications, but not even that many at this point. I think it's under 20. And once they work through those, they'll move on to Phase Two. So unlike liquor licenses, the statute doesn't require that the local governing board, that the City Council require, approve each application. Rather, the municipality's role is to choose how many businesses it wants within its community and to set the zoning qualifications for those businesses. And then it's ultimately the licensing board that issues the licenses and evaluates applicants based on, based on the qualifications set by statute. So the local medical marijuana ordinances can include both a regulatory and a zoning component. Most of the ones that we've worked on and seen do include those two parts, so that would go both your zoning code and your regulatory code. They can authorize one or more of the five categories of facilities or specific subcategories, like you could choose to only allow Class A growers, for example, and not, and not the larger ones and not the stacked growers. Can limit the number of each facility type, choosing any number that you want. You could theoretically limit it to one facility, or you could choose to not impose any numerical limit and only limit them by practical effect of zoning ordinances. And as I mentioned earlier, you can impose an annual administrative fee, up to $5,000 to defray administrative costs. And then you can impose zoning regulations, as long as they don't conflict with the state This side just kind of summarizes a couple of pros and cons that we've heard as to when communities are considering whether to opt in or not opt in to this new statute. I've now seen, sat through a lot of public hearings on this issue and have kind of taken notes on what various proponents and opponents have to say. And this is the summary of some of the points that come up over and over again. Those in favor of municipalities opting in tend to point to things like increased patient access. In a lot of communities, we've heard people comment about how difficult it is to find a provider of medical marijuana under the existing laws, given the five patient limit for caregivers and the unavailability of retail-type operations under the current regime. You know, hear a lot of comments about the overall societal views on marijuana are changing, and communities need to kind of come in line with new social acceptance of marijuana. People make points about state revenue sharing and local assessments, the opportunity for local revenue from these businesses. And then there's just the potential for business investment and job creation. Some of these businesses could create a fairly substantial number of jobs, the growers in particular, retail businesses. I think the estimate is more, you know, five or fewer employees. But processors and growers could have substantial number of job creation, at least potentially. Those opposed tend to point out that marijuana is still illegal under federal law. There's no exception for medical marijuana at this point. It is still listed as controlled substance. And while there's not much federal enforcement of that prohibition with respect to medical marijuana, the laws are certainly still on the books. Some point to risks associated with high cash businesses. At this point, it's very difficult for these businesses to obtain banking services because of the illegality under federal law, and they typically, I think, tend to have more cash on hand than the average business. Creates some safety, security risks, potential for theft. Some also point to the potential for diversion of stock to the black market, that growers are supposed to only sell to licensed businesses, and so on and so forth. It's all supposed to be through licensed channels, but just the increase in marijuana in the state, some say, might result in just more product being sold generally, not necessarily through licensed businesses, and also being sold to minors. The potential for some point to, or contend, that increased visibility of marijuana, for example, if there are storefronts that sell marijuana in like cities downtown, that could have an impact on how, you know, further impact on how society views the drug and ultimately lead to faster acceptance, and some people view that as a bad thing. And then finally, there is evidence of increased crime in Colorado as marijuana, and in particular recreational marijuana, has become more prevalent. There is a study that's, I'd encourage everyone to take a look at it as the city pursues this issue, and there's a link to it there. And it's far too lengthy for me to summarize, but the basic findings is that the marijuana, Colorado's kind of followed a path similar to Michigan, was the early adopter of medical marijuana and had only medical marijuana for some time, then jumped to recreational marijuana in 2013. And there is at least incidental evidence that there was an increase in certain types of crimes during the expansion of medical marijuana, then fairly significant increase in crime in the communities that allowed recreational marijuana, in its crime, including minor consumption of marijuana and also traffic incidents. So it's an interesting study. There's not, ultimately, the legalization of recreational marijuana is going to be decided by the voters statewide and isn't a city issue, but helpful, at least comparative information in that study. In terms of big-picture regulatory ordinance considerations for marijuana, communities tend to look at questions like which facilities should be allowed. Some communities are interested in pursuing all the facility types, and others have focused on a couple or on only growers or only dispensaries. The law gives you flexibility to choose what, you know, what your community needs, if anything. Should there be numerical limits, or should limitations be set only by zoning and market forces? And then finally, I apologize for the reference to townships, I should say, municipality or city, but what kinds of things would an applicant have to submit when they apply for a license? And would they have to apply to the state first? There's various ways to set up the application process. And then, you know, one kind of thorny question is if you set numerical limitations and then you end up getting more applicants than you have available licenses, there has to be some type of system for figuring out who gets the available licenses. In terms of zoning considerations, they're kind of just the typical zoning considerations. Where should the facilities be located? Should they be clustered with like businesses or buffered from one another? Should they be allowed on the same property? The state would, the state allows you to bundle different licensing types together on one site. A lot of communities are looking at buffering from churches, schools, daycares, other sensitive uses. Some communities are setting them up by special land use so that they all have to go through planning commission review, as opposed to being allowed by right. And they're also enacting regulations for things like signage, odor, sewer discharge, site security. Some of those issues are already addressed by state regulations, but communities can go, it can maybe go beyond those through their own zoning regulations. Briefly on Laura's emergency, sorry, the state's emergency rules. The state has promulgated temporary emergency rules. The permanent rules will be developed later on, but the temporary rules are what they're using to process the initial round of applications. Some of the more notable features as far as municipalities are concerned are security requirements, including locks, alarm systems, video surveillance, and odor control plans. And as I noted earlier, local regulations can't conflict with the state regulations. Now kind of moving past the 2016 legislation into some other related issues. As was noted earlier, recreational marijuana is going to be on the ballot in November. The proposed initiative essentially extends the MMFLA's licensing scheme to two new types of facilities. One's called the Marijuana Retailer, which would look similar to a provisioning center, except it would be able to sell marijuana to anyone over the age of 21, not just someone with a medical marijuana card. And then Marijuana Microbusinesses, which are kind of a small-scale combination of growers, processors, and provisioning centers. The basic idea is that they would be allowed to, at a small scale, grow their own marijuana, convert it into some type of usable form, whether that be edibles or smokable marijuana, and then sell the marijuana on-site. Under the new act, as with the, sorry, under the initiative, proposed initiative, as like the MMF La, municipalities could choose whether to allow or prohibit these facility types. And one question I've gotten over and over again is whether provisioning centers would automatically convert to marijuana retailers. The answer is that they would not. That would be a separate license. So if the city allows, chooses to allow provisioning centers and this were to pass, that doesn't mean you would suddenly have marijuana retailers in your community. You'd have to make a separate determination as to whether to allow those or not allow With respect to federal enforcement, as noted earlier, marijuana remains illegal under federal law. In the past, I think probably starting with the Obama administration, maybe even before that, there had been kind of a hands-off approach at the federal level, at least with respect to medical marijuana. The current administration has at times signaled a shift, perhaps increased enforcement, particularly from the Justice Department. The President has made some remarks suggesting that he doesn't necessarily agree with that approach, so there's a lot of uncertainty at the moment as to what's going to happen with federal enforcement of marijuana going forward. It's an issue that I think everyone in this industry or regulating this industry needs to keep an eye on, but as of the moment, there's been really no change. And medical marijuana regimes within states are, have been allowed to operate with no federal interference, as they have for a number of years now. And that's, with that, I'll return to my seat and-
Very good. Well, Nick, that was very thorough, and I appreciate you updating that PowerPoint to accommodate some information about the ballot proposal, which will be considered this November. I think that's helpful, good context to have. Let's open it up for questions. We'll work our way around the table. Actually, before I open it up for questions, I'll provide staff one last opportunity to speak if they'd like to add comment at this time. City Manager, Police Chief, Mr. Rubel, anything you'd like to add? Chief, if you do, would you mind coming up and joining Nick at the table, speaking into the microphone? Actually, you can remain with us, Chief Hart, because there may be some questions or comments that come up that would be appropriate for you to address.
Thank you very much. I got a question that I have, some information that I've come across is the $5,000, up to $5,000, if council were to allow one of the five pillars, so to speak, as I call them, of the new legislation to come into play here in Saline. If recreational marijuana is voted, is passed in the fall, is proposed, is that off the table?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because it's my understanding that it is. So any fees, let's say the $5,000 that we see up there, and we allow 10 various, you know, components of, whether it's a provisioning center or a grow facility or what have you, that then becomes moot in the information that I've reviewed so far. So financially, allowing that to come in. And then I have concerns of staffing levels, because we talked about some profit sharing, so to speak, from the state. We're 13 police officers from myself down. We're talking about cash business here because banks will not take the funds, as I understand it, because it's still a Schedule I drug through the United States government and through the DEA. So there's a lot of concerns that I have in the amount of cash that would be floating around our community, and there's certainly opportunities for someone to take advantage and, of course, you know, commit robbery or whatever it may be. Even the transportation from a grow facility to the test facility, federal law prohibits weapons and narcotics to be traveled together, even if it's marijuana. So if you have a savvy business owner who's transporting from the grow center to the test facility or to the provision center, they cannot even defend themselves with weapons because they're not allowed to be together. So now you're talking about one, two, maybe three vehicles traveling in a convoy, moving the narcotics or the cash around from one location to the next. So those are concerns that I have from a public safety perspective, is if we allow some of these, you know, one of the five pillars to come in, it becomes a strain on public safety.
Thank you for that perspective, Chief. I'd ask this of both of you and Mr. Curcio, if you could pull your microphones closer to you. Mr. Curcio, perhaps you can get clarification on the first point that the chief raised regarding the $5,000?
Mm-hmm.
But I do have one question for you before I turn it over to Councilwoman Mitchell. And I'll be very frank, I have not read the language that will appear on the November ballot, but I'm very mindful that the proposal that was written and passed in 2008, and you sort of alluded to this in your presentation, was, the language was perhaps, I'm being generous by saying ambiguous, maybe sloppy is a more apt way to put it, but it required a lot of action and subsequent discussion by the legislature and cleanup legislation. Is it your legal opinion that that sort of, that a similar effort would be required if the proposal that's on the ballot for this November were to pass?
Yes, there are definitely some questions that, you know, reading through the initiative language come to mind as an attorney. One, for example, is that under the MMF La, it's very clear that if a municipality does not opt in, that the default is that the facilities aren't allowed. There's some dispute, I think, among attorneys now whether that will be the case under the new act. It says that municipality may prohibit the facilities, but it doesn't really say what the default rule is, whether it can be, it's possible, I think, that someone might take the position that any community that doesn't want to participate is going to have to opt to adopt an ordinance saying it doesn't want to participate. That's an open question, but there are other, there are other questions like that as well, that it'll take either some interpretation by the agencies that are enforcing them or some clarification by the legislature down the road, I think.
Thank you. Well, it underscores a point we made last Thursday in reference to a proposed road funding ballot proposal, that it is extremely important to be thoughtful and precise in the language you choose when you put a proposal on the ballot, because there are significant consequences if the language is less than precise. With that, thank you again, Nick. Appreciate the presentation and the comments. Start with Councilwoman Mitchell and end with Councilwoman McClellan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is this, is that working? There we go. Can I, oh, it's out. Nope, it's there. Chief, is there a comparable cash-based business that you can point to that would give, that would give some kind of idea of about liability, safety issues that they would face?
I can't think of any.
You can't think of any?
No, because your casinos are allowed to, you know, transfer funds into banking institutions.
Okay.
I'm thinking of how they would even pay taxes in a facility here. There's some information that I came across through the Colorado model in California, where they were recommending that the businesses pay their taxes through, via armored car to bring taxes into their city hall to pay. So there's a large concern with the amount of cash that's being moved around.
And then I wanted to ask a quick clarifying question of our attorney. I understand about the $5,000, the yearly application. And then I think at one point you mentioned state revenue. Were you talking about just through sales tax, or?
There's an excise tax.
Excise tax.
And actually, while we've been speaking, I think I've at least maybe answered some of the themes. the chief's questions. So there's two revenues under the existing scheme. A municipality can impose a assessment up to $5,000, that's an annual fee. There's a 3% excise tax on Provisioning Centers, and those are the state revenues that are then shared to a number of agencies, the municipality being one of them. I think municipalities, I believe, get 25% of those revenues. It appears that that is the stream that would no longer exist if the ballot initiative were to pass. The ballot initiative does not affect the ability to impose the $5,000 assessment, but still, that is a significant stream of revenue that municipalities who have considered this have been thinking about, and it appears that that is going to be off the table if the new legislation passes.
And if the November, if the November language passes, is there any revenue stream at all?
From the state.
From the state, from anybody?
It doesn't look like it. So the assessment, you could still do. You could still do the $5,000 assessment.
We could do that still?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Seal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several of us went from city council and city government to a presentation, Marijuana in Michigan. What you need to know, it was given on April 4th in Lebonia, Michigan. And there were three presenters there. There was Mr. Ken Stucker from the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan, who frequently addresses legal issues for the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, kinds of organizations like that. And he made that very point, that if this ballot language passes as it exists, the excise tax completely goes away, that there is no stream of revenue any longer from the excise tax. They also passed out, well, they furnished everybody a booklet. It has a number of articles in it, and anybody who is here would like to see it is welcome to. I'll just cite two that kind of correspond with what you've already addressed. Mr. Curcio, there's an article in here from Nation, and the title is Driving While High: Deadly Crashes Involving Potter on the Rise, But Stopping Stone Drivers Won't Be Easy. That I know of, there is no readily available roadside test for, or even any kind of court decision about levels of THC or whatever else in the bloodstream that would constitute driving while impaired.
It is not like drunk driving, where we can, you know, not only take the driving that the officer observed, along with a standardized field sobriety test, and then a PBT if the motorist were to take that. So law enforcement has responded by sending officers to a drug recognition expert training, where there's certain things that they're trained to look for, but it's incredibly more difficult to try to ascertain a level or try to figure out where someone's at on that spectrum. And I think I read the same report as you, that 55% of people that were using it recreationally didn't really feel that driving even two hours after they smoked it, there was anything wrong with that.
The article's interesting. It cites a number of ways the use of marijuana impacts you. It includes reduced awareness, limited vision, sluggish reflexes, slower decisions, and even hallucinations. So those probably aren't good things for a driver to be experiencing. The other article that's cited, or one of the many other articles cited in here is entitled Crime Rate in Colorado Increases Much Faster Than the Rest of the Country. And they're pointing, I think, to the use of marijuana as a direct, or a direct cause of that increase in the crime rate in the state of Colorado. The other speaker was a female agent from the department, or the Drug Enforcement Agency, and she gave a number of testimonials, I guess, about her experience with what's going on. And she says that because it is such a high cash business, that a lot of organized crime units have moved in to take over. And she said they've seen particular influence there from Cuban gangs and Chinese gangs controlling a lot of these licenses. And I'm not sure what the experience has been with the licensing and regulation authorities up in Lansing in these pre-applications, but she stated that was their experience there. Now, I kind of took what she said, of course, from the standpoint that is working for the Drug Enforcement Agency. She's probably somewhat biased, if you will, but the same token, her experience, I think, should be counted for something. And then, lastly, I'm not sure that the licensing and regulation authorities are all that well-equipped at this time to handle the kind of work it's going to take to do the kind of inspections and so on that they think that they're going to do on these facilities. And there are some real horror stories, again, out of Colorado, about what's happened with some of these grow facilities, in terms of the kind of ruination it's caused in the buildings and so on, because of the high humidity, the high power consumption, and so on, and so on, and so on. So the recommendation that I heard as attending this conference was that there really isn't much upside to opting in at all to any of the five pillars, as the chief calls it, under the new proposed law that may be, well, come into effect here in the state of Michigan. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. I also attended that conference, and Mr. Seal's pointed out some of the things, as well as the chief, that were some of the takeaway points from it. There really clearly was not a benefit, if you looked at the big picture, is what the, what was sort of the takeaway from it. It's sort of this false, you know, money avenue, and there's just, there's so many issues that surround it, that I have great concern about it. I do have a couple of questions for you, though, so that, just so I can clarify. Now, what happens to those individuals that have medical marijuana licenses? So they're still going to keep their license, and they can be a recreational user at the same time, which means they can double dip, correct?
It's, so it's unclear. What is clear is that the recreational license is a separate license under the act. It's unclear, this is, as the mayor alluded to earlier, there's some ambiguities in the new legislation. And I'm not sure whether they'll have to give up a license, give up their provision center license in order to be a Marijuana Retailer, or if they would be allowed to hold them both simultaneously. I imagine they'll probably have to give it up, but that, the law doesn't directly say that. That would have to be something imposed by regulation or something down the road. But it's, from a municipality's standpoint, I think the important point is that they don't automatically convert to Marijuana Retailers. So if you were to allow Provisioning Centers now, you'd have to be, you'd have to, you know, subsequently allow Marijuana Retailers in order for them to be able to do that.
Right. So, yeah, but they're not making any indication as to whether those would be, would get preferential treatment to switch over, or, you know, if it's just going to be included, or we're just going to double dip here, and we'll have both.
Right. I'm not certain if that's going to come into implementation. And I guess it's possible you could have them in the same building, or I don't know how that would work.
Then, what wasn't in your presentation, and I don't remember, what are the allotments allowed for recreational use? Like, when you go into a dispensary to purchase, what amount?
Two point five ounces.
Is it 2.5 ounces?
So it mirrors the state, it mirrors the.
Medical. But, so, let me revert back. So if you have a medical card, you can get your, you can get your allotment, plus then you can go to anyone and get recreational. Or are they going to do away with the medical cards?
There will still be medical cards, because there will still be presumably a lot of communities in Michigan that don't allow recreational, or don't allow recreational retailers. So you'll still, they'll still have the cards, so that people can use other means of giving it, such as Provisioning Centers and caregivers. In terms of what you can buy at a time under the new regime?
It's set out by liquids and solids and edibles.
Yeah, I'm reading from this, this Michigan ballot, which is from the Coalition to regulate marijuana.
That's the.
Yeah, it says you can have 121, but limit personal possession to 2.5 ounces and go to 12 nights per household.
Okay. So that mirrors what you can do with medical?
Right. But, so what I'm saying, then, is if you have a medical card, you theoretically can double dip.
I haven't looked at that issue, but I'm not sure if that would be the case. I, again.
Because, okay, that's fine. I'm going to defer other questions. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gearball. Dean, if you wouldn't mind pulling that microphone closer to you, I'm sorry.
Looking at this article, it was basically last, in June 7th it was written, but it said something about a plan that's up to the voters would allow for a 10% excise tax on retail marijuana sales in addition to the state's 6% sales tax. So is this incorrect in this?
There were a number of different proposed initiatives. I don't think that's correct with respect to the one that ended up getting enough signers.
So basically, it's not, but would still be subject to the sales tax, so?
Yes, I think it is so.
My only concerns, I mean, I'm waiting for the voters to vote, because that's going to probably direct it, and then there'll be a lot of lawsuits back and forth, so it'll be no different than what had been 10 years ago. What I would wonder is, when you mentioned about, you know, kind of local ordinances and regulatory aspects, can we, as you had mentioned, as Jack had mentioned, about buildings and so forth, like electrical demands and those type of things, can a city or implement those types of requirements, or is that not considered part of our purview at this point?
That's a little bit of a gray area. There, so the act specifically allows you to adopt zoning regulations governing marijuana, but then a separate section says that it can't conflict with any state regulations. The state does have some kind of minimal building standards addressing certain things. I think it's an open question, the extent you can go above and beyond those. Most communities are doing it to some extent in their ordinances, putting in odor controls, putting, the one area that the rules address really comprehensively is site security. They have video camera regulations and that types of things. I think it would be a little bit dangerous in terms of preemption for a city to go above and beyond those, because the state's regulations are so comprehensive. But cities, I think, can fill in areas that the state hasn't addressed as thoroughly, like odor and some of the other typical zoning, noise and that type of thing, loading and unloading of trucks. And really, the only area that, the, one thing I should mention, I think I alluded to in the presentation, the state gets regulations very quickly, or, that's why it issued emergency regulations, because it was having trouble going through the notes and comments period, and it ended up kind of just doing it all at the last minute. So it decided to really focus on site security, and some of the other issues kind of got put on the back burner. And I think there's a role municipalities to play in filling in some of those, I guess, gaps in the state regulation.
Well, that's good, that we at least have some local control still. That's really my questions at this point. I'm waiting until the ballot. I'm glad we had this information, because I think some of this is stuff that none of us were aware of exactly how this was going to play out in terms of what's been discussed. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gearball. Mayor Perdemp Tar.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Gearball said, I appreciate the additional background information. I do have a couple of additional questions. One thing, I believe there are some cities who have specifically gone the, specifically gone the opt-out route at this point. Is there any, do you, is there a particular reason that you know that cities do that rather than simply as we, take no action and they're opt out?
So this law is very clear, that there's no legal effect to an opt-out resolution or opt-out ordinance. That's the default rule. It's, you know, there's no argument that it's not. Communities have done that. So my understanding, and I've heard this at conferences, is basically so that the clerk and other city staff have something they can hand to people who come in asking for, asking to open a business. It's kind of easier to tell them, you know, council's already looked at this and acted on it, than try to explain the default rule under state law type of thing. So it's just for administrative convenience.
Okay. Thank you. So this is, this is just from my own information, and I guess I shouldn't answer this. So a patient currently under the medical marijuana rules gets a card through a screening process through the state. Does the same apply for someone who's a binary caregiver? Is there also a validation process for that?
They have to be registered, I believe, with the state, but I don't think it's, it's definitely not an extensive application, like the facilities licensing. I think they're just looking at ID and perhaps criminal background, but not extensive.
And then the last question is about the fifth of the five categories of licensed facilities, which is safety compliance facilities. Is that envisioned to be a requirement, or how does that weigh in?
The testing facilities?
Testing facilities, yes.
Yes. So there, all marijuana sold are all, I guess it's all processors are required to submit a sampling of their product to the testing facilities. I mean, not all products sold, but just a sample, so they can test for quality and content and that type of thing.
Those would be businesses, also, this would not be state, so.
It's a business, yes. State's hard to feed for the testing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Har, Councilwoman McCollum.
Yeah, I don't, I need one more question. Recovered, I've got a couple of them. So local regulations can't conflict with state regulations, but state regulations can conflict with federal regulations?
That's a loaded, a loaded question.
Coming from the state to say, oh, well, you guys can't do it, but we can do it.
Right. So that's an issue of non-enforcement. Technically, the preemption rule applies that way as well, but the federal government's taken a hands-off approach, and the state government may do so as well. We don't know at this point.
And do you see that there, I guess you kind of addressed this with certainty, but that the federal government will ever take a ruling on it, like the liquor laws are. Federal law is correct. For most part, I mean.
No, so most liquor laws are at the state level, because it's not illegal federally. There, I mean, there is proposed legislation in Congress to at least decriminalize it in medical marijuana states. I alluded to my presentation, the President just recently gave a indication that he may possibly support that legislation, but it's proposed legislation at this point, it's certainly a possibility that it might come down the road, but again, it's uncertain.
And then, as far as the city, I mean, we're supporting substance abuse and substance abuse task force, at least voluntarily in. In name. So I guess I have concern with taking something like this on a little bit, if we're also on the other side, giving money to substance abuse task force and stuff like that. I mean, I understand the medical portion of it has its valid uses, and, but I'm concerned with November coming up and having something, and then it all changing when it turns to recreational use, so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, Mr. Curcio, thank you again for your presentation. Chief Hart, we appreciate your comments as well. You know, like a number of my colleagues, I have similar concerns about the proposal that is on the November ballot. And I will add that, and I'm not just speaking of myself individually, but none of us are ever required to prove a negative. I don't have to prove that recreational marijuana is not good for society. The proponents of this ballot proposal have to prove to me the tangible benefits of this passing. And right now, I don't know, I'm not aware of the tangible, the tangible benefits and how it will contribute positively to society. I will say that, in principle, I do support medical marijuana, and to me, there's overwhelming evidence to suggest that it is an appropriate, appropriate way to treat certain chronic conditions. Now, the way we distribute that and the way that it's accessed certainly is up for debate, and I don't claim to know of the best manner in which to do that. But again, I do think it can be beneficial in certain circumstances. So again, appreciate the discussion this evening. This will be an ongoing dialogue. Again, this is the first time we've discussed this matter in a number of years, so we will revisit it as a discussion item at an upcoming regular. revisit it as a discussion item at an upcoming regular council meeting. I would add that if folks have additional questions, concerns, or would like additional information, please call or email the city manager, and he can contact legal counsel or any other appropriate party to get you the information that, that you require. Again, appreciate the discussion, and Nick, we appreciate you taking the lead on this. Thank you very much. If there's nothing further, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 7:26 PM. Moved by Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tarr. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have, this meeting is adjourned. We'll start in, well, a little less than five minutes.